Okay, is everyone ready? Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a regularly scheduled committee of the whole meeting. I will call this meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. The time is 9:00 a.m. We want late addition to the agenda and apologize to the council and the staff for accommodating or for late entry, but we'll have this gentleman come in on item 300 appearances. So we'll start with item number one, number two, and then we'll move to Mr. Patrick O'Connell from Luna on item number three. And before you, you have a sample resolution that he is requesting us to consider. So let's move on to the committee of the whole meeting with the agenda. We'll turn this over to our city administrator, Britt J. Bennett.
Good morning. Item number one was Sean Lewis from Cross Anderson. He's not here yet, so we'll go to item number two. Excuse me.
Mr. Wold.
Mr. McNamara. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome again, Mr. McNamara.
Mayor and council, I'll try to do Sean's update. He can probably do a little bit more if he shows up as the meeting goes on, but there is really one item on the agenda for a change order today, which is for a follow-up on the soil remediation for the area on the site that we had talked about previously. On a good news side of things, I think the council had authorized up to $400,000 for that remediation work, and I'll let Sean get into a little bit more detail as he gets set up here, but the change order that we're requesting today is for $319,123.33, which is the work that is currently done and in place that takes care of that initial area of remediation. We did unfortunately discover some additional remediation that we want to at least make the council aware of. There's a couple of additional hotspots over by where the ponds are, more on the, you know, kind of south of the parking lot in between the two ponds. Based on our conversations with the environmental engineer, it's roughly about 200 plus, a little bit, cubic yards of dirt that we need to pull out. The idea right now is that we're going to stockpile it on-site so that they can do some additional testing to confirm where we can dispose of that dirt. On the plus side, that additional amount that, you know, potentially needs to be hauled away should fit hopefully within that initial 400,000 that we had talked to the council about in the past. So once we get a little bit more detail on that, there's a good chance we'll come back to chat about that a little bit more, but unless there's any questions from the council on the work that's been done out there or the work that's come up, we are just looking today for approval of change order 52 and the amount of $319,123.33.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McNamara. The only question I have real quick is that there's been a request for an extension for substantial completion from September 26th. Is that still part of this process? Okay, thank you very much. Any questions?
Thanks, Sean. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and councilors.
Good morning.
I have an answer to that question. Yes, this is time extension through the end of September as part of this change order request.
Okay, thank you.
Fifty-two.
Before we move forward, we'll have a question from Counselor Johnson. Counselor Johnson.
Sean can go ahead and finish his presentation.
Thank you. Sean Lewis from Cross Anderson. Good morning. Thank you.
Good morning. Well, John started here. I'll go back to the beginning I have here. Good morning. Sean Lewis, senior project manager with Cross Anderson. And overall, the project's on track and we're within budget, on schedule, and I'll touch base more on the schedule side of it, Mr. Mayor, in a moment. We are looking for temporary CO, which stands for Certificate of Occupancy this week. Punch list is well underway. Furniture is scheduled to start on around or on August 19, and that'll take about a couple of weeks for the most part. And then September operational is still the goal right now. And then we're looking forward to October ribbon-cutting ceremony, which is definitely something to celebrate and be excited about. So looking forward to that. Site work is in great shape. You can see here paving's done, striping's done. Since this picture was taken, a lot of the landscaping and sod and things of those nature are also all done, so good, great progress there. Solar array, it's probably hard to see from the road, so I thought this would be a fun picture to share with everybody. The solar array up on the roof is nearly complete at this point. We're looking to work on the solar array on the ground, and that'll be kind of dovetail in with the explanation on the schedule portion of it, too. So hold that thought for a moment. So solar's moving along. Again, I was pleased that we were able to get all of our equipment and materials and things for the solar array in time relatively quickly, so we have everything on hand for the most part to complete that work. Contaminated soil, John covered most of that, what we wanted to share this morning already. I guess I'll field any other questions in context of that change order request number fifty-two. Quick budget update, this, yeah, it's on the screen here for those of you. I can share some PDF copy later, too, if that helps, yeah. But there's not a whole lot of changes from the last time I was here on this one, frankly, because we had talked about the $400,000 pending request, or I should say recommendation to proceed with the soil corrections, and I'll touch base a little bit more on that in a moment as well. But the good news is that we're still within budget, and presently, we are, again, change order and contingency log like we've been looking at throughout the process, we are at $280,000 of contingency remaining, and that's taking into account the 400,000 for contaminated soil remediation and other, all of the approved-to-date change order requests. And then also as a side note, too, and we talked about this on June 24th, when we were here to recommend approving with up to $400,000, there are grant opportunities that are out there. NTS is going to work with the city and KAA and Wold to work applying for that grant. Always never guarantee with grants, but there are applications out there to attempt to recuperate a significant portion of those funds and get them back into the budget later on, too. In the meantime, we're accounting for them on our budget and our contingency log, like all those funds are being allocated or committed at this point in the meantime. Change order request fifty-two John started out with. Again, council meeting on June 24th, we recommended to proceed up to $400,000. That was for that portion primarily in the southwest portion of the site. So we've, we're done with that, and that's what the change order request number fifty-two is. It's for $319,123.33. In the meantime, additional soils, contaminated soils were located. I'll come back to that. Well, John explained that, I think, relatively well already on that. The time extension, coming back to that question and addressing that. We, we are, as part of change order request number fifty-two, we have a time extension through September, and I wanted to clarify a few things on that. It's primarily to finish the south end of the site, so the soil remediation that we've already talked a little bit about this morning, remaining landscaping and seeding, those two particular items, when we did, we do our pre-installation meetings for those different work sculpts, and we were doing that one with the landscape architect and our landscaper. It was recommended that we waited on the landscaping on the lower portion of those ponds in the south end, and there's native seeding that goes in the south end of there. Normally, a Minnesota summer would be pretty dry right now, normally. This year's been a little different, so the recommendation was made to hold off on landscaping those ponds and also seeding the native seed until August and September, because it creates for a better product at the end. It gets better, we get better germination, and typically more seed will take and we get a better result. Now, that combined with the fact that in the southeast corner, we have that giant pile of soil, that's our topsoil, that's, we're waiting, we have a little bit of a cascading effect, I'm going to try to explain a little bit what's happening on the south end. So because we had to hold up on soil remediation, it held up finishing the ponds, which held up using up the topsoil, which also held up the solar array on that ground system because that's that southeast corner. So we have a few cascading things there. We've worked, our teams worked diligently to manage and kind of navigate through all of that. That's really what the schedule extension is for, is because we will have some things going on the south end of the site still, and technically, our contract completion date is currently September 5th right now, so we're extending it to the end of September just as a formality, really, to clarify and to help set expectations that there'll be a little bit of work going on in the south end of the site still. In the meantime, I wanted to make sure we're clear, the building remains on schedule in the meantime, which is the important part of the project. So like I mentioned earlier in a schedule update, we, we're into punch list, we're expecting temporary certificate of occupancy this week, furniture is going to be starting in a couple of weeks here, and we're anticipating being fully operational in September, like we planned all along. So that's the good news on that. Overall, the real important part of the facility is still, we're trying, we're doing our best to keep that on schedule, and we'll wait right along. And then, like John mentioned, we have additional contaminated soil. We think, based on discussions and further analysis and investigations, we think what's left, we can keep it within that $400,000 that was approved back in June. So that's a real quick summary up to that point. Are there any questions at all that I can address?
Counselor Johnson, and then over to Counselor Biondich.
Thank you. For the time extension, I would like to see it very specifically that it's just the landscaping. I know that we're on time with everything else, but since I've been on the council, we've been working really hard to keep contractors on time, and I don't want to just give a blanket "Sure, you can have another 21 days." I've been there, I've seen it, it's really good, but as a matter of principle, I'd like to see that as part of our, as part of the change order specifically being just the landscaping in that southeast quadrant and the soil remedial. So that would be one request I would have for the staff as we move forward. And then, can you explain how additional contamination was found after we did all these things, and then we found 400,000-ish, and then we thought we had it all? Like, what led to that discovery?
Yeah, great question, Counselor Johnson, and I, fair enough on clarifying the extension is for the south end of the site primarily, we can sure do that. So basically, test results, the short version is, test results take a little time to get, and by the time samples were done, NTS came back and said, "We found more."
Okay. And so NTS is kind of leading this where it needs to be remediated and that kind of stuff?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, yes, of course.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Anyone else? Counselor Bochsteiner?
Thank you. So just, just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, we approved the up to $400,000, and at this time, it came in at the $319,000 and some change, so it's not in addition to the 400 that we've approved?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Counselor Johnson.
One more thing. Fire prevention week is August 5th through the 11th. That's usually when we hold our open house. Will it be a potential to schedule the grand opening during fire potential week? EJ would?
The staff asked to have it at the old building still, to do their one last fire prevention week downtown here.
Okay.
And we're planning to do the grand opening down there on October 2nd is what they're looking at.
Okay. Thank you, Britt.
Yeah, that'll be exciting.
Thank you. Counselor Bob Biondich.
Thank you. Just a quick question. First of all, I would love to see the PDF copy of the budget.
Absolutely.
And then, Britt, would you be applying for grants, grant dollars for some of the project that would be up, and you would work with NTS?
NTS is the contractor we usually work with for those petroleum grants that we're looking for.
Okay.
Because they need all the technical data that they have to get those grants.
So even, I know that it may not come to us right away, but would you put that in the budget sheet or wherever so we could see additional dollars coming in for the project? Once, if they're approved?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Biondich. Any other questions before we move to the next item? Counselor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we need a motion to approve the change order? So I will move approval.
Counselor Paulson moves to approve the change order as presented by Cross Anderson and the staff with respect to the solar remediation adjustment. Is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Bochsteiner? Is there any further discussion? Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Paulson, does that time limit refer just, is that part of your motion that it's just the landscaping portion?
I think it was agreed to.
Yeah, yep. Yeah, we can clarify that, absolutely.
Thank you. Clarify that as well in the motion as far as that goes. You have that motion now? Thank you, Pam. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Freely.
So the cost we incur for remediation of polluted ground blows my mind for the costs that we incur.
I agree.
And it makes me wonder, like, so you're really digging up contaminated soil and hauling it away somewhere, essentially?
Yes, correct.
So how do they justify the cost of over $300,000 for whatever load that is? Is it the volatility of the substances they're picking up, or I just think it's outrageous, to be honest with you, and I shame on them, or thank you very much, I'm not sure what to say, but the reality is, like, this is nuts, as far as I'm concerned, especially when we did preliminary testing to determine that there was something there. Now it's another $319,000? I don't get it, but thank you for taking care of it, and if you have any communications with the guys that take it away, find that out for me if possible.
Yeah, absolutely. I feel the same way.
Thank you, Counselor Freely. It has been moved and supported to approve the change order as requested with respect to the soil remediation at the public safety building. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Aye. Yes, Mr. Mayor. Any other questions at all for the new public safety facility?
No.
Excellent.
Not to this, not from this elected body. I'm sure there'll be others forthcoming.
Yeah, all right. Well, thank you very much. Have a good rest of your day.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis, and thank you, Mr. McNamara, and just before you move, I just want to apologize for the meeting a couple of weeks ago where you sat for a long, arduous process through this, through this information that was disseminated by the general public regarding the flooding. So I know you had your own timeframe, so I apologize for not getting you ahead of that, which I should have done, and so once again, I apologize for that.
All right.
Thank you.
Understand completely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Britt?
Second item on the agenda is Gigi Grahec from the HRA to discuss her request for building permit fee waiver for a single-family development project.
Good morning. Please state your name for record and welcome to the council committee of the whole meeting.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, city council members. This is Gigi Grahec with Virginia HRA. I'm here with our executive director, Dana Hiltonan. So Virginia HRA has submitted an application for state funding to build three new single-family homes. According to the city's housing study, there is an immediate need for 25 to 35 new single-family homes. However, of course, like any other project, we have some challenges. The cost to build these homes for each home will be $400,000 to $500,000, and they're expected to appraise $250,000 to $280,000. So this will create a large financial gap, which will be very hard for us to move forward without additional support. So to bridge this gap, we put an application to MHFA and also put an application to IRRB. Income limit for potential buyers for these places will be $134,500. The median income in the city of Virginia is $41,000. So we will be making these homes available to a larger community in our town. So the application process is extremely competitive, so without the local support, it will be impossible for us to make this project happen. So we have been partnering with school district, AOA, Virginia Public Utilities, they are waiving their fees, and we are also putting our own money to make it happen. We are requesting a waiver for building permit fees as city's contribution for this project. This project will not only bring much-needed housing, but will also add city's tax base. The approximate property taxes for all three homes will be a little under $9,000. So that means more money for local services, schools, parks, and roads. So we are asking for your support to make this project happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Johnson, then we'll go over to Counselor Paulson and any other counselor who'd like to weigh in. Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to waive up to $5,000 per home from city fees.
Support.
Moved by Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Bochsteiner, to waive the permitting fees up to $5,000 for each home as a contribution for the city with respect to the HRA project. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gigi. Thank you, Dana. Appreciate it very much.
You wanted to add your presentation into this?
Yes, next item on the agenda is Patrick O'Connell from the Luna Group with respect to a request for us to consider a resolution, but to explain these circumstances with respect to this request. Please state your name for the record and welcome to this committee of the whole meeting.
Thank you. My name is Patrick O'Connell. I'm with Launa, the Labor's International Union of North America. Thank you, councilors, staff, and mayor, for allowing me to present here today. The resolution that I'm speaking on today is, again, is for Northern Natural Gas. They are a natural gas supplier in the area. They service the majority of northern Minnesota. They have approximately 3,300 miles of pipeline in the area. Most people don't recognize the name Northern Natural Gas because you buy your gas from another entity, Minnesota Energy, municipality, things of that nature. But Northern Natural Gas is the one who owns and operates the pipeline and actually supplies the gas. Everyone who has natural gas service pays a fee for maintenance and repairs on that pipeline, and Northern Natural Gas decided to use a non-local contractor from Oklahoma that employs workers from Texas, Oklahoma, and Louisiana. They do not employ any local workers in the area. We have plenty of skilled workers that have been doing this work for decades and generations, and we're just looking for a support resolution from the city to, you know, let them know that that's not okay. If we pay for the services on the pipeline, then our members of the community should work on it. We have the skilled, trained people. So that's essentially what the resolution is for, and I'm just seeking support from that.
Moved. Moved to approve the resolution as presented. Does everybody have a copy of this resolution before them? Moved by Counselor Freely, is there support? Is there support?
Support for discussion.
Support by Counselor Johnson for the discussion. Further discussion, if I may ask one question before we go to Counselor Johnson. Does Northern Natural Gas pay prevailing wage?
They do not.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I would be in support of referring this to the staff to make sure it meets our needs as a municipality and that we're not taking sides or doing that kind of thing. I realize it's a letter of support, but I think we need to funnel it through our staff and have them make sure it matches what our previous resolution and letters of support do. So I will ask that that be forwarded to staff for final authoring before we finally approve it at Tuesday's meeting.
Is that amenable to the motion that you're being made there, Counselor Freely, to make a motion to move forward with that with support by Counselor Johnson, and then move that to staff for additional comments before we go to the city council for next Tuesday's meeting?
In anticipation that it would move in the direction that he's seeking, I would be amenable to that.
Okay, thank you. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Paulson.
Thank you, and I would be in support as well. I do have one additional maybe comment, or I don't know if this would be a question, but there was back in the news on July 14th, and I don't know if you're aware of this, the parent company of Minnesota Power says the Minnesota Department of Commerce is now backing the company's sale to investment firm BlackRock and the Canadian Pension Fund after a recent agreement. So that means that Minnesota Power will be now owned by BlackRock and the Canadian Pension Fund, and I'm wondering if you have any input or information, because our services would be provided or owned by a foreign entity.
Yeah, with respect to that, it's still in, they haven't actually approved the acquisition merger of Minnesota Power to CIP and GPP. merger of Minnesota Power to CIP and GPP. So as of right now, it's a non-issue, I guess. It's still a regulated utility, gas is, so it would still be under the Public Utilities Commission. So I don't foresee there being a rate, is that kind of what you're getting at, is like a rate concern by a Canadian outfit owning Minnesota Power, or?
Well, I just feel like I'm in support of this, but I'm also in support of Minnesota keeping Minnesota Power.
Sure, okay.
So I just feel like one should agree with the other entity. You know, if you want Minnesota workers, we should also have our own power company here in Minnesota, owned in Minnesota. So that's a little contradictory to me.
Okay, I guess it's kind of a, it'd be a potential separate issue as well, they're, you know, a power supplier as compared to a natural gas supplier. Northern Natural Gas would retain ownership of the pipeline.
Of the pipeline.
You know, that is, the Minnesota Power acquisition doesn't have anything pertaining to that.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Paulson. It has been moved and supported to move this to the city council next Tuesday for a final consideration, discussion, and potential vote with staff's input and investigation. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. O'Connell.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Mayor, if I may also ask Matt Reed to come up, he wants to speak for just a few moments.
Yes, thank you.
As Matt Reed's citizen, not Matt Reed's city engineer of record.
Matt Reed, our engineer of rec from SCH, speaking on behalf of a very great recreational event. Thank you, Matt. Good morning.
Good morning. Yes, thank you. I am not here in city engineer of record capacity this morning. I'm actually in here as Rock Ridge Baseball Association President. And I just wanted to bring forward to the council, I don't know if you were aware or not, but we hosted, co-hosted with Mountain Iron, the Iron Range Baseball Babe Ruth End of the Year Tournament this weekend. And we hosted it at Stock Field. Our field was at Stock Field, Mountain Iron had a field that they used as well. And I just felt like it was important to come forward and let you know what a great job Brian Silver and the Park and Rec staff did, first and foremost, getting Stock Field in a condition that, from what I'm hearing from other people, and I agree myself, in a condition better than it's been in many years. And it looked, it looked great, it played great, they did a fantastic job ahead of the tournament, getting it ready and getting it in a condition that is welcoming to the communities from around the Iron Range. So we've got, we had 10 teams there, three were from Rock Ridge, the other seven were teams from around the Iron Range communities. And on top of that, Brian was there from 10 o'clock on Friday morning until 5 o'clock on Sunday evening. He was there for every single game. He was there to ensure that the fields were prepped in between, granted, and I don't want to discount the work that his staff did as well. They came in and dragged the field, got it chalked, got it prepped, everything. He was there to make sure that that was done. He helped announce, which we all got some pretty good humor out of that, listening to him mispronounce names, but it was, it was all good humor. But he did a great job. I was essentially, by default, the tournament director, and so having him there to help me, because I also had to coach four games this weekend, so having him there to help me was a huge help. And just to welcome the teams in and announce games and things like that. So I just wanted to bring that forward. The city of Virginia, Park and Rec, the city government has been a great partner with Rock Ridge Baseball in general, the youth baseball programs that play on Lenary and Beyondage Field and Lakeside Field, as well as when Stock Field is involved, and Brian is heavily involved with the older groups, helping hire umpires, all those sorts of things. And so when things like this happen in the community, I just think it's important that people hear about that, and I want to make sure you understand the efforts that your staff put in and what a great job they did. So that's all I had this morning, and I want to thank Brian and his team, as well as the city of Virginia for the continued support for the baseball program and for the kids. So thank you.
Thank you, Matt, very much.
Thank you. And number three is to discuss the purchase or lease of a grader for Public Works Department.
This is carried over from February the 26th of 2025. We'll talk with the discussion, starting with Councilor Johnson. Councilor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I will move that we move forward with the lease of a brand-new grader and get that process starting, started with the lease.
Okay, moved by Councilor Johnson, is there support?
All support.
Support by Councilor Freely, is there any further discussion? Councilor Boxneider.
Thank you, and thank you, Jim, for providing more information in the packet. I'm wondering if we've had any other companies reach out to us as well, specifically some local companies, whether they reached out to either Pam, Britt, anyone else?
Looking at the packet, there was a number of used and new equipment that was listed as to what was for sale, what was not for sale. So maybe Jim can come up and give you a little synopsis, but before we do that, go to Councilor Johnson. Councilor Johnson.
Listen.
Okay, thank you. Jim, if you wouldn't mind coming up, please, Jim Rosvitt, our Park and Public Works Director. You know, it's been a long, arduous process moving forward for a great need in the community. So Jim, could you give us a little update and answer Councilor Boxneider's question?
Yeah, we have looked into other vendors. Caterpillar, the costs get up there, the, the, I don't know how I want to word it, the service, I feel, is second to what we're looking at. Kamatsu, which RMS sells, Kamatsu does not offer a six-wheel-drive grader, which we need to have here. If you understand that, six wheels, all six wheels will spin, and you can adjust the speed on them too, so it allows you to plow snow and carry snow. So you've got basically two choices, you've got Caterpillar, or you've got John Deere. You also have Volvo, but this, our service is a big part we're really struggling with, and a lot of our vending are, it seems like we're purchasing things, and everyone seems to be washing their hands of service, and then they don't want anything to, I mean, even when we purchase something new, to get a vendor back to come and take care of the stuff that we've noticed an issue being, as soon as we received it, we've had issues with that. And also, John Deere does have a grader we looked at last year, and it does have 213 hours on it now. And I believe they were giving us about another $17,000 break on it, was it Pam? I think there was an additional seven, I think there was 10 off, and then maybe an additional seven. So there's another $17,000 off on that. And with that, you're still getting that five-year warrant, or, I'm sorry, seven-year warranty. So we've got enough stuff down there at Public Works that has no warranties, and I mean, we're patching and we're putting everything we can together and doing whatever we can, but these are one of our main resources that we use all the time, and we've got to start investing and trying to rotate this stuff through our, and that's part of our package that we're working on.
Apologize. Thank you, Jim. Councilor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. This is now month six of this discussion. It started in February. And, and as has been noted before, the amount of time we save with our staff by knowing the equipment from the day it arrives, and we can maintain it at a level that will allow for reliability. I had a really interesting conversation with a friend of mine who sells products to the mining companies of all kinds, hydraulic products. And he brought up a really good point, and I've been thinking about it a lot lately, that the assurance of reliability of the equipment has a monetary value that we don't have the ability to calculate. And so when our first snowstorm comes, and we know this brand-new piece of equipment is going to start immediately, and it's going to plow our roads at a decent rate safely, is something that can't be measured, as opposed to the three we have now, two of which I understand are still down, or did they get fixed yet?
Jim?
The one is down permanent, the transmission literally grenade on it. The other one has transmission issues, but I think we can tear into it and maybe get another year or two, maybe get a couple of years out of it yet, is what we're hoping for. But I think, hopefully, we can do most of that in-house, even if we remove the transmission, send out the transmission rebuilt, it'll still give us, you know, hopefully we can get a couple of years out of it. But like I said, those graders too, they're 30 years old, they've had replacement engines in them, they've had replacement transmissions on them. I mean, we're talking 15,000 hours. 15,000 hours is usually a worn-out piece of equipment. They go to the scrapyard, but we are still trying to run this stuff to get us by, but I mean, if we can have one out of three to give us some light of hope and continue in the right direction, and we are sitting, you know, we're sitting better with other things. Loaders, I'm sitting with four good loaders right now. I don't see us needing a loader for 10 years, you know, unless something catastrophic happens. But excavators, maybe an update on an excavator, but some polytrucks and that, yeah, we're going to have to do that. But if we can continue and rotate this stuff through periodically, and we've budgeted for it in our capital equipment plan over and over again, and I had it in again for this year for a grader, you know, and that's, that's what we're trying to accomplish here and set up a preventative maintenance and something that's going to work for us and something we can budget for.
And I thank you for that, Jim. I think that's the other part that I really want to point out, is that in your professional, your job, that you know this stuff backwards and forwards. And I find frustration that we have to discuss what you've requested, and just the reliability of a piece of equipment for the year is, I calculated the savings between a used, give or take, and the new one is about $150,000, give or take. That's $30,000 a year. To me, that insurance that it's going to start in the morning is really, really important. So I think that to not, to not approve the purchase of this grader through a lease would be irresponsible of the council at this point because of the needs and not wants. And it's not just this equipment, as you've said, there's several other, the trucks that the snow's falling out of the bottom while we're hauling it down the street because there's full of holes. So I think that it's time that we get this grader and make sure it gets here before the first snowfall. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Johnson. So it has been moved and supported, and we have, I mean, with some clarification, this is for the John Deere, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And that's, yeah, okay, thank you. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? First, Councilor Boxneider, then over to Councilor Paulson. Councilor Boxneider.
Thank you. So the question that I had asked was, did we have any local companies such as Road Machinery or Caterpillar reach out to any one of our staff and ask them to disseminate information to us, and did we, as a council, receive that information?
Pam?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we did receive an email from RMS, Jim and I, and it's up to the Public Works Director to seek quotes. It's not an RFP where we're advertising for this. He goes to the company that is going to give the machine that he needs, right, Jim? And I don't?
Yes, and it is a source well bid.
Yes.
So it is a government bid which only requires one.
One.
We're not required a second. I've looked at seconds just to get a feel for them and see what our options are, and my choice, being with the department head, is McCoy Equipment. That's what we're running now. I kind of want to stay consistent because a lot of our filters and things like that will change over. So if I've got a filter I need in the shop, and it might come off another piece of equipment, but they're still interchangeable. So if I keep my equipment similar, and like I say, my service, I'm pleased with McCoy's service. So, you know, that plays a big part, and like I say, Kamatsu, RMS, they do not offer a six-wheel-drive grader. A four-wheel-drive grader does not do us any good. Absolutely, it's made for Arizona.
Thank you. My next question is, it looks like there's two different lease agreements that we can review, or are they the same? On both of these, the annual payment is around $90,000, it looks like. Where are we going to get that $90,000 each year going forward?
Well, first question is, in order to get the $90,000, where do we budget for it? You know, and I understand?
Where in our budget are we finding that?
We're going to have to find it in the budget. So the question is this, either buy the equipment and provide the service, or you don't buy the equipment and don't provide the service. So how are we going to come up with the money? You know, this is a problem that we had over the course of the decades, because this equipment has been not rotated on a vehicle replacement schedule or an equipment replacement schedule, none of those things, and now we're stuck. Are we going to kick the can down the road, or are we not? Are we going to prioritize and invest in the service that we provide to the community, or are we not? So we'll have to budget for it. If we don't, then we don't purchase it. Additional questions? First Pam, and then back over to Jim. Pam?
Thanks, Mayor. As previously, when we discussed this, there are two leases that will be coming off next year. So that would provide for the replacement of this lease, so that's almost $100,000 that will be off the books where this one would just take its place. And this has a $20,000 down payment as well.
Councilor Boxneider?
And when you say they come off next year, is the last payment made this year or next year? So the last payment is made in 2026, which means in 2027, in the final three years, we would have, or final four years, we would have the money going forward, but that doesn't solve for next year's payment in 2026, if we still have that $100,000-ish in payments?
Once again, that's something we have to budget for in 2026. We have to make some hard choices, like we do in every budget, so the question is, do we budget for it or not? That's up the elected body here to determine what we want to do. So that's all I'm going to say. So that's my concern, my opinion, and moving forward, we have to invest. Either buy the equipment and we get the service, or we don't buy the equipment and we don't get the service. So service suffers as a result of it, it puts a burden on the staff, which you get that done. If you don't have the tools that you need to accomplish goals and objectives for the health and safety of this community, then they have to compromise. So that's the hard decisions we have to make. I certainly understand the concern with respect to the budget and the money going forward, but maybe we have to make some adjustments to the other parts of the budget in order to accommodate. So I don't know if that answers your question, from my perspective or not. Councilor Boxneider?
Yeah, thank you. The final thing that I want to say is that while I understand that others may think it's irresponsible to not purchase this, I think it's irresponsible to make a purchase without a plan for payment. And as long as I understand a plan, I'm happy to support it going forward, but we don't have a plan for next year, and that's why I'm uncomfortable doing this. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Councilor Boxneider, Councilor Johnson, then over to Councilor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's important to remember that there's going to be time savings and parts savings and outsourcing savings that we can't quantify on buying a new equipment. There are, the easiest, the lowest-hanging fruit is that the council gives up their insurance. There's $100,000 a year moving forward for this equipment. I agree with the mayor that this is something that we absolutely have to do. As I said before, that first snowstorm, if we don't have, if we have one grader that works, I'm guessing Eighth Street would get plowed, Second Avenue, Ninth Avenue, and maybe the alleys. But not everything is about dollars and cents. Not everything is about, well, I understand that we need to cover, yes, we do, but we also need to keep our citizens safe. At this point, it's a public safety issue if we don't have streets plowed. If we don't have the equipment our staff need to do their jobs, they can't do their jobs, as the mayor very eloquently pointed out. Either we have the service or we don't. And $90,000 in a $32 million budget? jobs, as the mayor very eloquently pointed out. Either we have the service or we don't. And $90,000 in a $32 million budget, is that what our budget is, Britt, around? Is a small, small percentage of something we need to figure out. And it's a budget. There is going to be money that we can move around, there is money that we won't spend that we didn't spend this year, and it is up to us. And I would ask Councilor Bockstetter, with all due respect, what is your plan then to find the $90,000? What would you do? Because I have offered at least three options of how to find that money, especially for next year. Thank you.
And that's what I've been asking city staff for the past six months, is where are we finding this money? And I haven't been given an answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bockstetter. Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanna review page, the page 10 in our packet has the total amount of $413,000, is that correct? And the finance rate is 4.855%. The total finance charge would be $59,000, and that's amortized over five years, is that correct?
Okay, I just wanted to comment on that. So basically, with the John Deere, we probably wouldn't choose that as the leasing company. I think we would go back with Huntington like we did for the camera. And their rate is at 4.25. I just got a balance, or a lease, on the $400,000, which now it would be reduced. I can get a new amortization schedule from them for the next meeting, and we could consider either a five or a seven-year lease if we wanted to reduce the payment.
So the payment is $90,462-
On the 400.
On the 400, over-
Five years.
Five years. Okay, and then if we go to, and that's on a John Deere, sorry, I'm flip-flopping here. It's on a John Deere 7, 772G motor grader with six-wheel drive. And then if I flip to page 20, and that's a 2024, the, the other one that I was previously discussing, on page 20, it's a 2023 John Deere. And is there an amortization for that one that has 357 hours? It's a John Deere 672. What is the difference between a 772 and a 672? And then I also have a question with, what is the tax benefit of $91,370? That's, I'm just, I'm finding that on page 20, but I'm wondering what the, is that directly to this company, or is that a Huntington lease? On page 20, it says $90,030 a month.
It says what? On the lease amortization? That's only with Huntington?
I don't see an amortization for page 20, the tractor on page 20, or, excuse me, the-
What year is that one?
2023.
No, because these are used, that would include, Jim can probably give a little more information. The tax benefit, I think, is just the reduction for probably city. It is a used piece of equipment, I don't believe there's a warranty involved, and I'm not sure how many hours are on that one. And plus, that would include, we'd have to pay shipping because I think that one was coming from Kansas. So the Huntington lease is just on the 400, but I can get new numbers for the next meeting.
Jim?
So you can review that at that time.
Would you please?
And those, those examples I gave you for used equipment, those are no guarantees. With the used piece of equipment, you've gotta actually look at it. There's a lot of variables out there. I mean, you should have a couple mechanics, when you're investing that much money, you should have a couple mechanics. Where we're gonna find that, and by the time we find it, and when we come back to it, and if it's taken six months to get anywhere where we still haven't got anywhere here, I can't give you a guarantee. I mean, we might have to fly to New Mexico to buy a grader of our choice or in our budget or, but at least if we're buying, if we lease, we know what we're buying, we're getting into that. These are examples, we're, these aren't included with snowplow packages either, so you've got a wing on the side, you've got a nose plow on the front of it, you know, you wanna make sure they're all-wheel drive or six-wheel drive, you know, there's a lot of variables in there.
So you didn't, you weren't unable to find a used John Deere grader with all the things that the city would need on it?
Nothing has, unless you buy from a municipality. And usually when municipalities let them go, the hours are up there on them.
So did you ask John Deere, from, from page 10 here, did you ask them if they had any used with all the equipment? Or just like a year, year older?
No, they didn't. They had a 23 with, but I believe it had 5,000 hours. And 5,000 hours, that's a third of your life on your machine already, so.
I just, I would have liked to have been, I mean, I understand you're the department head, but we have to make our budget work, and what we're talking about right now with a year gap, we're talking for every $61,000, one levy percentage point. So we're almost at 2% to be able to afford to purchase the brand-new truck, 2%, of the levy, it would increase just for this purchase. And I'm concerned, as we go up and we are dealing with different union contracts as we speak, going into the 2026 budget, I don't know how we are not going to increase our levy a substantial amount by including all of these, just wages, normal union, following the three-year contracts, everything is going to increase, including healthcare. And I do think we need to have the healthcare discussion, you know, to save the, the city some money on that. And that, that definitely would be a time in our budget discussion, but I, I don't know how we can agree to buy something when we don't have, we haven't done any budget planning right now, and we don't know what that looks like. So I'm not, I under, I think we all agree, you need the piece of equipment, we all are in agreement with it, it's just what type of piece of equipment and how much can we afford without additional 2% levy on the taxpayers for this specific piece of equipment. So I was assuming that we were gonna have a little bit more robust information regarding differences between used and new, and I'm, the only one I'm seeing is the one you said you had to fly to Kansas for. So, and that's not even amortized at this point to know how much, that's just a purchase flat out. I mean, you can finance anything, you know, you can-
But I think by the time you add in, it's $343,000, by the time you add in shipping and the cost of sending people there to look at the equipment, you're gonna be close to the 400. So it's probably about the same.
And that's why I was wondering if John Deere had anything used or a year or two old?
No, and like I say, I've repeated that over again. You know, and I came on board here because we need to crack problems, and this place is outdated and it needs work. And if we don't wanna invest, we wanna continue to kick the can down the road, I'm dealing on a lot of other issues too in this city that things have been neglected. I'm dealing on some pumps at the lift station right now, haven't been touched in four, in 30 years. Every one of them's worn out. It's, we've got to invest back in the city. I don't, I don't know what the answer is, but I'm not gonna put my name on another used piece of equipment down there, and it spends six months in the shop every year to get it so it'll make it through six months of winter time. It's just, my shop is so overloaded right now, I've got four mechanics that are going steady, and things aren't getting any easier. Everything we do purchase, as soon as it's purchased, everybody wipes their hands and walks away from it. They're on the phone, they spend more time on the phone with these vendors and, and people trying to help them diagnose things. We've got dealerships that are, they can't figure it out, so it comes back to our shop, then it's our responsibility.
And Jim, I understand that, like, I'm not, I am, I respect you immensely, I think you do a great job and your staff, they do a fantastic job after all of the, the storms and the debris. I mean, I just applaud all of you, it was just an amazing thing to watch all of you work and, and take care of the residents of Virginia, so I truly thank you for that. But we're put in a situation where we also have to balance budgets, and so that's, I think that that's, that's what we're, I'm teetering on myself, is trying to find a good balance here, and it, it just doesn't seem like, and I understand what you're saying about new versus used, but I truly don't understand if it's a couple, three years old, that that would be a huge maintenance issue. Why would they sell it if it's a, if it's going to be a maintenance issue? I can't envision that.
So, so what's, what's your answer? I mean, what are you guys looking at for me? Are you gonna give me a check for $250,000 and say, okay, go find the grader you want, or repair the one you have, or, I, I mean, I'm looking for suggestions.
In my opinion, I wanna get a new grader, I don't wanna keep repairing. I mean, you can't keep using the ones that you're using. But in my opinion, I would have rather have seen a little compromise, trying to keep the dollar value at a, at a place where we can, and I know we have to plan our budget, I understand that, but we don't, we don't have that yet, we don't have the money yet. So it's, when would this, when would a piece of equipment be delivered, Jim?
We could probably have it within a week if we wanted to.
Okay, so then you'd have to start making those payments right away?
No, and I don't think, I think even on the $20,000, they might have, would maybe hold back on the amount on that.
They deliver, they would deliver a piece of equipment without us making payments on it?
We're doing a lease, so we would have the lease amount, they would pay the invoice, and we make the lease payment to the company.
Right.
So we're not forking out the whole.
No, no, I understand that. But the lease payment would start, if it gets delivered, you're gonna start your lease payment within 30 days. That's typically how a lease works.
Not a monthly lease, it's an annual lease.
I believe it's a year.
Next year, we have to make a payment.
So it would be 2026.
Yeah, it's 2026.
We would pay 90, the $90,000.
September 1st.
Which is not a budgeted thing, and that's what Councilor Bockstetter is trying to get at. We haven't budgeted, we don't have that in our budget. And unless we add that, then we're increasing the levy almost two percentage points just for this specific piece of equipment. So I'm, I know you need the grader, I understand that, I think we all understand that. It's just, how do we, how do we balance this moving forward with our, with our levy increase? That's what, that's what I'm personally struggling with. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to move it to the council meeting for additional discussion and a vote, one way or the other. Additional information could be forthcoming in that next week to help satisfy some of the questions you may have. It's not gonna answer the budget question, but it'll answer maybe some of the questions you have, Councilor Paulson, with respect to the process, with respect to which use or what's new. But the issue is this, yes, it might, based upon this specific purchase, the levy can go up 2%. But as we all know, we make adjustments when the budget is to where maybe something else doesn't get purchased, so the levy, you know, levy changes. I mean, it's not just, we're just gonna purchase this and the levy's going up 2% automatically, that's our job to budget for that. So we have to anticipate that's the case. So if this is what we're gonna do, and if we're gonna decide we're gonna, we're not gonna purchase this, although we all know we need it, and we're gonna wait till next year and what to do, that, good luck in providing the services that we need. And like I said before, services will be compromised as a result if we don't. So that's a decision we have to make, one or the other. Our job is to put the budget together, which we will do. If we have to raise the levy, we try to minimize as much as we can, but we have to make adjustments to wherever, all, for the entire budget, all the staff, all of us moving forward. You can cut here, you can cut there, you can make adjustments here, make adjustments there in order to accomplish that. So it's not, so for the purpose of the public who's listening, just because we purchase the grader doesn't mean automatically the levy's automatically 2% because of that. There's changes that we make as a result of that. So it has been moved and supported to move this to the council meeting for a final vote of approval with additional information potentially forthcoming, and adjustments could be made for next Tuesday. So that's where we're at now. Motion moved and supported. Further discussion, Councilor Beyondich.
So, Jim, this is your recommendation? This comes?
Yes, it is.
Okay. My other question is, we have talked earlier, is there a possibility, Jim, that because we have that one-year gap, could we possibly rent a grader from, I don't know who rents them, does the one out on the highway, for one year to get us through this gap? Then we would have those two drop off. Is that a possibility at all?
It is, but the cost of a grader is 10, rental grader set up for us is $10,700 a month. So my opinion, I'd rather see us invest into the grader instead of renting something.
So the lease cost for the grader at an annual basis less than what you would rent it for, for six months?
No, it's, well, yeah, monthly is $10,700 for, and lease would be $90,000, so.
Yeah, per year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Beyondich?
So how long would that be rented for? Six months?
Approximately six months. Being that our other graders are up and running and we don't need, in fact, we're behind on grading gravel roads and doing some grading work right now, but that's because we do have a couple graders down, but unfortunately, there's other stuff that's gonna be done, so things have got kicked to the curb with the storms and that.
And I understand that if you rented, if you rented one at $10,700 a month for six months versus leasing at 90, would we be able to do that for one year until those bonds drop off?
We could, but we've still gotta pay that monthly rent. I mean, my opinion, you're losing money if you're gonna rent.
So when is our next, when do we actually start talking about the budget for next year, Brett?
Very soon. And I'd like to, I mean, I know this is a discussion we've had before about previous things like the fire truck and the ambulance, we bought both of those knowing that you're two to three years out, which budget that we can't even create yet, so we've done this before. I mean, there is a precedent for it, I guess you could say. But like, like the mayor said, if you guys wanna purchase this this year, we just find a way to put it in the budget next year.
Thank you, Councilor Beyondich. It has been moved and supported to move this to the city council for final discussion and vote. Is there any further discussion on this item? Hearing, Councilor Paulson?
Mayor, I will support this going forward to the next, to the council meeting, but could we get a little bit more information on that amortization?
So what did you need?
The new amortization.
Yes, so do you want, that would be on the 393? That would be based on $393,000 with a $20,000 down payment?
Yes.
Okay, and then do you want to stay at five years, or do you wanna go seven? Do you want options?
We have two options.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Paulson. It has been moved and supported to bring this to the city council meeting for additional discussion and a final vote. Is there any further discussion on this matter? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please, Pam.
Motley's absent. Paulson?
Aye.
Beyondich?
Aye.
Bockstetter?
No.
Friedleep?
Aye.
Toffey?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion passes five to one, thank you. So can we move Jim up again? I think he wants to talk about the pumps, so you don't have to sit around for the rest of the time, is that amenable?
Number five also was the purchase of three culverts from LNL Rental at a total cost.
We've got one more item to do first.
What's going on?
There's another item he's got on the agenda.
Okay, let's go. I thought you wanted to do the-
Yeah, we do, we have another thing too, but.
Okay.
Number five is for the purchase of three culverts from LNL Rental at a cost of $18,221.28.
So moved. Councilor Johnson moves to approve the purchase of three culverts from LNL Rental at a total cost of $18,221.28. Is there support? Is there support? Is there support?
All support.
Support by Council Freedleep. Further discussion? These are culverts to help us with our sewer. Well, Councilor Bachsneider?
Thank you. Yeah, I did have to Google what a culvert is, if I'm being entirely honest. I'm just curious, like, how does installation work on the culverts? Is this like an all-in price or do we have a lot more costs to be expected going forward?
No, this is for the purchase of the materials, the actual culverts. My crew could actually do the installation on them. And they are culverts, I don't know if you're aware, we're doing some work on Silver Creek, which runs from Silver Lake to basically Northern Engine back there, and that's one of our main outlets for the city. There are three culverts that are under, behind Canaries on the Old Railroad grid, and I believe they were put in in the 40s. Two are concrete, one's galvanized. And believe it or not, the concrete ones are missing the bottoms on them, so they've got rebar for the bottom of the pipe. And there's something going on with the tops of the pipe. I'm assuming they're separating and that concrete's caving in, so it's caving in the top of the pipes too, so. But it's, you know, they're, I couldn't tell you the age of them, but they do need to be replaced.
Thank you. My other question is, is where in the budget will this be coming out of?
The Stormwater Fund, so it comes out of the Sanitary Sewer Fund.
Thank you, Councilor Bachsneider. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
And then I just handed out an email that Jim got yesterday for the pricing for the Influent pump. Jim, if you want to talk about, sorry to get you back up again, the Influent pump pricing.
And we just got this.
Did you want to rebuild and repair or would you like to look at new?
Well, there, what I'd like to do is, there's four Influenzer pumps that work at the wastewater treatment plant. There are main pumps that run in. They run, there's wear rings that wear on them. So as these pumps wear out, the wear rings settle on them, and you adjust the wear rings. Well, we're out of room for adjustment on all four pumps, of course, because there's been no maintenance. What I recommend is we purchase a fifth pump, and what we generally like to do is have a fifth, and then we can start rotating pumps through for rebuilds, so we don't have a pump out of line while another one's in. So the cost would be, I believe, $50,000 for the one pump. We could put that in line, send the other pump out for a rebuild, and they'll give us a scenario whether they can even rebuild the pumps or if the casings are bad. I know on our lift stations, we had lift pumps that were 50 years old, we couldn't even split the casings on them because there was nothing left of the casings. I don't think that's going to be the problem here. I'm hoping it's just a rebuild on them. But it's something that's got to be done.
Okay, thank you. You're requesting one new pump, and then the others are estimated only to rebuild the existing pump is about $32,119, but it's, you know, it's subject to change based upon a pump inspection. So we have to, the new pumps, you don't have to worry about the inspection piece, but the repaired, the rebuild, you know, this is based upon an actual pump inspection, correct?
Well, and they'll have to inspect it because they'll have to break their car back at their shop. But the new pump would be to replace the first pump we took out to be rebuilt.
Right.
So that would keep us with the four still in line. And that's what we like to do. We like to keep a spare pump, and their cost, they're expensive, but if you don't have it or you don't have it on hand, you can put it, you can predicament, and you know as well as I do, we don't want any more issues down at the wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you, Jim. Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I'm assuming that this, we would be taking funds out of our sanitary sewer fund?
Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Or what is it?
Wastewater Treatment Plant. Yes, it's same, it's under the sanitary sewer, it's a sub-fund.
That's the fund?
Yep.
Correct? Okay, and that's the fund we were, we gained all that interest, like $69,000 in interest. But we just, what purchase did we just make that we were going to be utilizing that interest? Oh, the cameras?
The cameras.
Okay, so now we would be actually dipping into the?
Whatever wastewater treatment plant has for building repairs. We haven't had a lot of building repairs.
So this would come out of building repairs? And not that sanitary sewer fund?
The sanitary sewer fund has a couple sub-funds underneath it, Stormwater and Wastewater Treatment Plant. So they all live under the same thing, but they have, they're divvied up under separate things.
Okay, so this isn't, it's not just, I mean, we've basically, in my mind, we've spent that interest on the camera purchase.
Correct.
So this will be actually tapping into that sub-fund?
Correct.
And do we, is it a healthy balance in there?
Sewer fund usually is. Like I said, thankfully, we haven't had a lot of repairs there this year. You know, some years it's the digesturite and some years it's this and that, we haven't had that.
And I know this is something that the residents want to see happen as well, so.
And we did change chemicals, which helped a little bit of our costs come down a little bit. If you recall, we went to that different chemical.
And then the other question that I have, in that spreadsheet, Jim, that I had sent out that you guys responded to on the rain events and all that, when I, when I put on there what lift stations were being checked and pumped, and then it's Pierceall, where is that a location of a lift station? Is that what you call it? And would this pump be going into that lift station?
Pierceall pump station is behind Menards and behind the?
Behind Menards?
Yes.
In the Pierceall Industrial Park area.
Okay.
And something I want to bring to attention too is, these rain events are throwing things all over the place. I mean, we're having issues coming up where we don't have issues, and we've been shuffling stuff around where, okay, we don't have a problem here this week, but we got a problem here now this week. Or Pierceall, I'm drawing a blank, and I've got them numbered in my truck, there's 18 of them, I can't remember them all, but. The one up to the golf course, we've never had a problem. We had to bypass that, which is something unusual. But we also think there might be a problem going into the lift station, and that's something we'll determine once we're able to clean and televise that. We think there's a 48-inch pipe, 224-inch pipes, all three of those going into 124-inch pipe at the lift station. And I think it's getting overwhelmed before it hits the lift station. And some guys think there's crossover pipes that ran from other things in there yet. And we can't determine that because it's about a 600-foot run, and it's always full of water, so it's something we'll, we'll have to set up a bypass ourselves, and then we'll camera televise it and see what we're dealing with. Once we can find some information on this too.
Thank you for that update.
There's a lot going on.
That's really good to know. So then, just real quick, will this new pump, will this go into a lift station that's the most needing of the pump?
No, this isn't, these are different pumps. So the lift station, you've got, there are separate pumps, there are three-phase pumps, there's two pumps in each lift station. We've been going through them since I came onboard, so we've been servicing on repairing, replacing, whatever we need to do. We're going in the right direction there, and we continue to. These are four pumps at the wastewater treatment plant. That pump the actual wastewater over when it first arrives into the plant.
Got it.
So there's four that run, and they'll run boom, 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 and they'll cycle. And if it calls for one, two, or three pumps, then they run three or they'll run four. But those pumps need to be serviced, and there's wear rings on them, like I said, that wear down. And you keep adjusting for your wear rings, and as those wear rings wear down, they wear out and there's nothing left on the wear rings. So they're definitely due for rebuilds, you know, they should have been done prior to that.
I just, I misunderstood. That's why it's coming out of the wastewater treatment portion of that, so it's physically at the plant itself.
In the plant.
And then, Jim, will you be bringing forward pumps that, like, at the lift station, those pumps? Will you be bringing that forward too, eventually, as you find them, where they, you know, the ones that needed the most?
Yes, and I have. I probably, I think I've had about six or seven rebuilt in the, in the time we've been here. And we do have a contractor that they, they load test the pumps and they see what they're putting out and how they're holding up and that, and they'll make requests on, hey, this one's getting at the end of its life, you know, you get everything you can out of it. And then we'll make, they'll make a recommendation to us, and then we'll kind of go from there.
So we could foresee that coming forward?
Yeah, and it has been. And we've been documenting that, and it's stuff we're adding into our GIS system too to see, this pump was built this date, this many hours, you know, and it'll all show it on a, you'll be able to pull it up once we finish the GIS, but it's, there's a lot going on there.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you, Mayor, and I will be in support of this.
Thank you, Councilor Paulson. But before we go to Councilor Bachsneider, so the request is to purchase a new pump in the amount of $50,692. That comes out of the wastewater treatment plant. So it has been moved, and we're going to be looking for a motion move with that already? We need a motion move forward before we do that. First, we'll go to Councilor Bachsneider, we'll add her light on first, and then we'll go to Councilor Johnson. Councilor Bachsneider?
Thank you. I pulled up our financials, and under the wastewater treatment plant, it looks like the repair and maintenance of the building, we have $43,000 budgeted for this year and none have been spent yet. It looks like for the repair and maintenance of the equipment, we have just around $68,000 not spent yet, so we'll probably have to tap into both of those budgets, so not just the building, but also the equipment.
Yeah, and this is part of the equipment as well. So thank you for that clarification and pointing that out for us, Councilor Bachsneider. So it has been moved and supported for a discussion, Council, I'm sorry, look, I'm sorry, Councilor Johnson?
I will move to purchase the new pump, $50,692 plus freight installation.
Thank you. Motion by Councilor Johnson to approve the purchase of the new pump at a cost of $50,692 to be split in cost for the two funds that we have available, as pointed out by Councilor Bachsneider. Is there support?
Or?
Support by Councilor Paulson. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Is that all for Jim? Thank you, Jim.
Appreciate it. Item number four is, I think the last part of our fixtures, furnishings, and equipment for the Public Safety Center. The first one's the purchase of a tool holder for the maintenance room of the Public Safety Center with a quote from Snap-on at a cost of $8,687.07.
So moved. Move to approve by Councilor Paulson, supported by Councilor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, roll call, please.
Aye.
Biondich?
Aye.
Bachsneider?
No.
Freedleep?
Aye.
Tuffy?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion passes five, one. Thank you.
The next item is the appliances for the Public Safety Center. They're coming from Pohaki in the amount of $61,359.59.
So moved.
Support.
Move to approve by Councilor Johnson and supported by Councilor Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please, Pam.
Biondich?
Aye.
Bachsneider?
No.
Freedleep?
Aye.
Tuffy?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motley's absent. Paulson?
Aye.
Motion passes five, one. Thank you.
The next item was the televisions or monitors from the Purpitch TV in the amount of $23,325.
So moved. Move to approve by two voices. Councilor Paulson, supported by Councilor Johnson. Further discussion? Just real quick, all these items are within the budget of the Public Safety Building?
Correct, they're still within the FF budget.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Moving and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion, roll call, please, Pam.
Bachsneider?
No.
Freedleep?
Aye.
Tuffy?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Biondich?
Aye.
Motion passes five, one. Thank you.
We really wanted a commercial Speed Queen washer and dryer.
Can I back up a moment? I'll just, thank you. I was going to ask this question before I vote, I vote for it anyway, but I had a question about, these are Samsung, and I'm unfamiliar with security monitors made by Samsung. And I mean, I didn't disrespect the manufacturer, but you've got Purpose TV, it was providing, which is local, which is fantastic, but they don't carry the Samsung appliances anymore because they are unreliable in some respects. And so I'm hoping that these security cameras meet the test, and I'm sure that this has been vetted out by staff, so I just wanted to point that out, because I got that call, how come you're purchasing these and they don't carry the Samsung appliances anymore? So I just wanted to clarify that.
Not a lot of, not a lot of companies have commercial-grade television monitors. Samsung is one of the only ones that does have commercial grade. They're not your normal smart TV. They're made for commercial buildings for that input from security monitors or from alerting systems or those kind of things.
I hope that answered your question. Thank you very much. Okay, next item, please.
Thank you. And the Speed Queen washer and dryers was a specific brand we wanted because they're known for their usage for the turnout here. Am I, is that right? Eric, am I saying this correctly? No. But we did want the Speed Queen. Pohaki didn't have them. We had to go to Purpitch, so there's the quote for the Speed Queens.
So moved. Move to approve by Council Freedleep, been supported by Council Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please, Pam.
Freedleep?
Aye.
Tuffy?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motley's absent. Paulson?
Aye.
Biondich?
Aye.
Um, item number six is review the draft guidelines for a grant program for the remediation of inflow and infiltration, and this kind of goes with the, the ordinance that we were discussing in number 13. City staff were directed to talk to IRRB about if we were able to get secure funding to provide a grant program to our citizens for them to remediate the inflow and infiltration, so to, either if they need to solve some pump, they need to disconnect their roof drains, they need to put in a new floor drain, a backflow preventer, a check valve, any of those things that could prevent inflow and infiltration, what would a grant program look like? So this is what staff's created, and if the council agrees with this kind of a program, we would forward it on to IRRB to request funding for a grant.
And we did meet with, uh, make sure I'm correct?
Twice, yes.
Twice, yes, we did, yes, thank you. Counselor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, um, I had requested this kind of go hand in hand with the ordinance update, and, um, I, I don't know if we can pull the ordinance update into this discussion, but, um, I'm still not comfortable with the language within until we get an actual program in place, so I would, um, I feel like you need to have the funding mechanism in place if it gets approved before you, um, penalize people for all of these requirements. And then, if we do pull this into this conversation, I have some specific concerns about language within, so, um, I'm happy to go ahead with the, um, I suppose we'd, this is just a reviewing of the draft.
Correct, correct, and then if the council agrees at this level with the grant program parameters, I'll do a resolution for the next one to apply for the IRRB grant.
So I'm comfortable with that, I'm just not comfortable until we get this solidified, um, with the actual ordinance changes. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else with respect to the guidelines? I'm comfortable with the grant program for mediation, I think the other is a separate issue moving forward, although they tie in together. Counselor Johnson?
I will move to direct staff to, um, continue working on the draft guidelines and, and take the next steps.
Uh, motion by Counselor Johnson, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Friedleeb, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item number seven is a request to transfer funds from the 2025A bond investment held at 4M Fund back to the City General Fund for 2025 street reconstruction projects.
So moved.
Uh, move to approve by Counselor Paulson and supported by Counselor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Number eight is a request to move the transfer of funds from the 2025B bond investment, which is for the Tiff District 7-1, back to the General Fund.
So moved.
So moved, support.
Moved by Counselor Johnson and supported by Counselor Bachsneider, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. The next item, please.
Item number nine is review the quotes for financial planning assistance for the city.
And as we look at this, uh, subject, if we decide to move forward with the, uh, with the contract for someone that's one of these vendors, um, we don't have to take a low, we could, we could make an adjustment to that, correct, or we have to take the lowest responsible bid?
We don't have to take the lowest, no.
You don't have to take anything, right, huh? That's what I thought, just wanted to clarify that, so thank you. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, I know that this, how long ago did we request for this?
A while ago.
It was quite a while ago.
Yeah.
And, um, I really wish that we would have been able to find, um, an entity sooner because we are going into our budget discussion, and I feel like this is paramount to have, um, a company come and help us with a financial, long-term debt and financial assessment. And which company, Britt, is there, how many, just two in here?
Two, I, yeah, I spoke with four and only two were able to provide.
Um, which company was the one maybe recommended from Baker Tilly? Or is Baker Tilly?
From Northland, Northland Securities, George Ilerson had recommended, he's, either one of them is fine, he's worked with both of them. Okay. Both great firms. He was the one that gave me the names of the, um, Northland was not able to do to staffing. He gave me the names of these three, um, CLA, ABDO, and Baker Tilly, and CLA, which is Clifton Larson, something, um, was able, unable to do to staffing also.
Okay, and what would your recommendation be out of these entities?
You know, any of them are great, they're all well-known firms, all done this a long time. I know people that work at all these facilities, they're, they're wonderful.
And, um, I know that the next question will be, do we have this in our budget? And in my opinion, we hopefully will have some monies in professional services in different department areas, but I feel like if we don't, that this could come from other professional services in all departments, since this would be reviewing, uh, the entire city structure and, uh, budget structure. So, um, I feel that this is too important not to have us move forward on, um, as we then would be discussing also our bond rating going forward, and that to me is, it's worth the money to spend, to spend. So, um, I guess I would be open to whomever would be the best candidate, but I really do want to move forward on this. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Paulson. Counselor Bachsneider?
Thank you. Um, one thing that I noted when reading through these is the, to me, the difference between the two is Baker Tilly was an all-in price, whereas, is it ABDO Financial Solutions had some additional fees, so there was some mileage, hotels, like $150 if you want to copy, probably not $20,000 worth, I would guess, but, um, I do like the all-in fee with Baker Tilly, we just know what we're getting into with that. Um, one, one question that I do have, that I feel is really related to bringing in a financial firm, is do we know the status of our audit from last year and when we would get that? I'm assuming that's something that maybe isn't necessary, but would probably be extremely helpful for them to review throughout that process.
I don't have the status, but I will find out.
Do we have an estimate or what we see in previous years when we typically get it back?
We could give them last year's audit.
What would be 2023's audit we would be giving them, we're waiting for 2024's audit.
Yep, right.
Yep.
It was the most recent one we have.
And then, my final question is, so we're asking them to provide projections, and those projections, is there also going to be recommendations on, uh, different considerations we should take going forward as well for cost-saving services? I think projections are one thing, but I think recommendations on how we can better manage our dollars is really what I'm looking for.
That's your finance director, that new finance director is what you're going to be tasking them with. This isn't a firm that's going to come and do an audit on everybody's time, or what staff are doing, or how it's happening, so that wouldn't be extremely helpful to us if they did that, because they, that's not what they do. I think the finance director would help with that, and, you know, thankfully we have interviews this week for that one, at least the first round, and we can hopefully have something in place soon.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Counselor Bachsneider. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you. I do, I, so I was gonna actually tie that in, um, with the, when will be potential decision, so it would go into second-round interviews typically?
As early as next week if we can, the week after, um.
That needs to be filled as soon as we can possibly fill it. Then from start, so, so once a candidate is approved, background check, how, how quickly do you think a candidate, uh, once approved, would be in the seat?
Last one I got back, one week after they submitted their background check packet, so it was really fast.
So we can do a quicker turnaround on that?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, on the audit report, why is it taking so long?
There's a lot of, uh, great question, I, I don't know that I'm gonna answer that for the auditors, I can ask them that question.
Do you want me to call Walker, Jerome?
No, I can ask him the question for you. I do know we had to do, we did get enough federal funding that we had to do the, a federal, separate audit for federally funded information, so that's part of it.
And they, does that have to be included with our regular audit, or is a federal audit, that is, can that be a separate branch or separate arm? I, I, that shouldn't necessarily go?
I think it is part of the regular audit, and I think the federal needs the regular audit also, I think they all need to come together.
I don't know that I've seen it go, and we're in, we're almost into September, I don't think I've ever seen results.
Last year, I don't remember when last year's came, it was pretty late, but I don't remember when it was.
And does that not have to be turned in by September 15th, is the?
August 15th.
Oh, August 15th, so we're, we will be past the deadline of August 15th?
I don't know that.
Okay, um, I would expect to have that answered by the council meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I just don't want to speak for the auditors without.
No, but that's something, that's something that needs to be done in a timely fashion, and it needs to be done so we can begin our budget process properly, and without that information, it's very difficult. And then I would like them to come forward and give a presentation. Okay, so, I don't know, I'll make a motion, is, was there a motion on the floor now? Okay, so, the first motion I'm gonna make is to, uh, have staff contact our auditor and report back to the, uh, council meeting with the date the audit will be completed, as well as, um, when they will be coming to give us the update.
Support.
As you get that motion, Pam, moved by Counselor Paulson and supported by Counselor Bachsneider, is there any further discussion? Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor, I will not be supporting this, I believe the audit will be done when it's done, and us telling them, I, I just think this is an overreach, so I will not be supporting the motion.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Johnson, uh, it has been moved and supported, uh, is there any further discussion? Uh, hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please, Pam.
Puffy?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Paulson?
Aye.
Yandich?
Aye.
Bachsneider?
Aye.
Friedleeb?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes five-one, thank you. Next, uh, next motion?
Mayor.
Is there one? Uh, Counselor Bachsneider?
I would move to, move forward with Baker Tilly as our, uh, financial planning assistant.
Thank you, motion by Counselor Bachsneider to, uh, uh, move to the council meeting a final vote to, uh, contract with Baker Tilly for financial services assistance, is there support?
Support for discussion.
Support by Counselor Paulson for discussion, further discussion, Counselor Paulson.
Mayor, um, I just wanted to know what, what else, what other information did Counselor Bachsneider want to be included?
How to streamline services and?
Can you just repeat that for me?
Um, I was wondering if they would do any recommendations for changes going forward instead of just the financial planning, so saying that this is an area that you should invest more in, this is an area that you should invest less in, as just like an overall recommendation, but it sounds like that that will have to wait for our finance director.
I would like to have them guide us through that, because I feel like that's part of the original question that I had regarding our bond rating, so I would.
You think, you're talking investments?
Yes.
They're not gonna tell us about staffing, and they're not gonna tell us what to cut out of our budget.
No, not, not anything about that, not, not that.
That's how I took what Counselor Bachsneider was looking for.
I want to know our financial picture regarding enterprise funds, um, special revenue, whatever those funds are that, that we manage, and then, um, our debt, I guess our debt management, long-term debt management, I mean, I think that's why we want them to come here, to manage our, I mean, to assist us with managing these very large issues, financial issues that we have coming forward.
That is what they will do, under Activity 3 on page 73, identify historical trends and create the forecast to provide a comprehensive perspective of factors affecting the financial capacity of the city. That's what I think you're looking for, Counselor Paulson.
Right, but movement supported, further discussion, Counselor Bachsneider?
Another example I have is we, um, at the beginning of the year, talked garbage rate increases, we never made an increase, will they give options of what that would look like if either we don't increase and what that increase amount would be, um, and what, you know, our anticipated expenses are and what that's looking like? That's more so what I was talking about based on recommendations.
A hundred percent, that they're gonna give us, yes.
Wonderful, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Counselor.
Next 10 years, 10-year timeframe, which is wonderful, yep.
And once we get our finance director on board, that helps significantly as well. So it has been moved and supported, uh, to contract with Baker Tilly, move that to the council meeting for a final discussion and a vote, is there any further discussion at the committee of the whole? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please, Pam.
Puffy?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Paulson?
Aye.
Yandich?
Aye.
Bachsneider?
Aye.
Friedleeb?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes five-one, thank you. Next, uh, next motion?
Mayor.
Is there one? Uh, Counselor Bachsneider?
I would move to, move forward with Baker Tilly as our, uh, financial planning assistant.
Thank you, motion by Counselor Bachsneider to, uh, uh, move to the council meeting a final vote to, uh, contract with Baker Tilly for financial services assistance, is there support?
Support for discussion.
Support by Counselor Paulson for discussion, further discussion, Counselor Paulson.
Mayor, um, I just wanted to know what, what else, what other information did Counselor Bachsneider want to be included?
How to streamline services and?
Can you just repeat that for me?
Um, I was wondering if they would do any recommendations for changes going forward instead of just the financial planning, so saying that this is an area that you should invest more in, this is an area that you should invest less in, as just like an overall recommendation, but it sounds like that that will have to wait for our finance director.
I would like to have them guide us through that, because I feel like that's part of the original question that I had regarding our bond rating, so I would.
You think, you're talking investments?
Yes.
They're not gonna tell us about staffing, and they're not gonna tell us what to cut out of our budget.
No, not, not anything about that, not, not that.
That's how I took what Counselor Bachsneider was looking for.
I want to know our financial picture regarding enterprise funds, um, special revenue, whatever those funds are that, that we manage, and then, um, our debt, I guess our debt management, long-term debt management, I mean, I think that's why we want them to come here, to manage our, I mean, to assist us with managing these very large issues, financial issues that we have coming forward.
That is what they will do, under Activity 3 on page 73, identify historical trends and create the forecast to provide a comprehensive perspective of factors affecting the financial capacity of the city. That's what I think you're looking for, Counselor Paulson.
Right, but movement supported, further discussion, Counselor Bachsneider?
Another example I have is we, um, at the beginning of the year, talked garbage rate increases, we never made an increase, will they give options of what that would look like if either we don't increase and what that increase amount would be, um, and what, you know, our anticipated expenses are and what that's looking like? That's more so what I was talking about based on recommendations.
A hundred percent, that they're gonna give us, yes.
Wonderful, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Counselor.
Next 10 years, 10-year timeframe, which is wonderful, yep.
And once we get our finance director on board, that helps significantly as well. So it has been moved and supported, uh, to contract with Baker Tilly, move that to the council meeting for a final discussion and a vote, is there any further discussion at the committee of the whole? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Item number 10 is review the options for solutions at the golf course from the Bodens and Grounds meeting that was held on July 21st, 2025.
Uh, Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we had a very well-attended, uh, golf course, a meeting about the golf course on Tuesday, July 21st, um, there were 12 recommendations or suggestions that the staff have been working on, I will go through that list now. Um, uh, we started the meeting actually making sure that everybody understood that we, we did hear them, and we did listen, and we gave plenty of time to listen to the concerns, and then we moved into a solutions-based discussion, uh, reiterating with folks that we were open to any and all options, um, and then, uh, Pam took a, a great, did a good job of taking notes. Um, we also had some discussion about what has changed over the last few years, um, with there being significant changes to the, the sport of golf, the equipment, um, the landscape has changed due to trees and, and that kind of stuff. Um, so the following suggestions were made by multiple people, uh, move the tee box, change it to a par-three, uh, and the quote was, "Take the driver out of the game on hole two." Uh, move the pin in hole two, make the street one-way and put up the 20-foot fence net, excuse me, in the middle of the street, move the cart path to the other side of the green, uh, place a hazard along the avenue, implement a tree replacement program, install an eight-foot fence in the area, um, to really encourage folks to use irons on hole two, uh, move the fairway with a dog left, install a 20-foot fence by the tee box, install cameras, and only use the red tee box, um, during the interim. And I know that, um, we are, there are a couple of the other things that we have done immediately were to only use the red tee box, uh, during regular play, with, uh, court marshals being on the court in that area to help regulate during tournaments where they need to use the other colored tee boxes. Um, we have referred, we've, I've gotten a few other recommendations that I have forwarded on to Brian and the staff, um, and I will, uh, defer back to Britt for any updates on where we've come to, um, and then, once we have those, the plan is to reconvene a meeting, um, with, with other stuff we have done and what it, what the plan may be moving forward. So Britt, if there's anything else that you could add, of where we're at or what we've accomplished so far.
I did talk to Steve Fingeruz yesterday, which was our golf professional, and he did, um, they did move everybody to move the pin to the, was it the red pins, was it, they're going to, like you mentioned, on regular play, except for during tournaments or invitationals, and then they also changed it to a, is it a par-two or par-three? They did the one par less, and, um, they said that as of this weekend, they had zero problems over the weekend. He did talk to a few residents who also confirmed there was zero problems this weekend, so
the exterior of the fence to the interior of the fence.
There's a couple pine trees, too.
Yeah, those pine trees will probably have to be removed as a result of that, so, FYI. Uh, supported by Counselor Bachsneider, further discussion, uh, quickly, a discussion with, uh, with Brian Silber, these are hybrid cottonwood trees that were, uh, little, uh, that were planted, I did talk to a couple residents there, talked to the men's club, talked to, I mean, a number of people who utilize that golf course on a regular basis, not the residents along 11th Avenue because they have a tendency to call, uh, certain counselors as a result of this. So, uh, these trees are hybrid cottonwood trees, they don't blossom flowers like most of them do, they grow 10 feet every year, so it's not going to take a number of years, 20 years for them to grow. So, moving those inside the fence line is going to be along the old, what they call the, uh, the rough part of the golf course, and moving them inside would not adversely affect or adversely interfere with that, but it could interfere with the pine trees that were currently planted, and you'll have to take a look at that, however.
I have a point of clarification.
No, let me finish. And so, this is the information that was disseminated, I apologize, Counselor, uh, Paulson, uh, was, uh, was disseminated, so, but at any rate, these trees, uh, I agree with Counselor Paulson, could be moved inside. Now, whether that has an adverse effect on the conifers or not, I don't know, but they're, uh, according to, uh, Brian, they're going to check on that to make sure, may they may or may not, I'm sorry, Counselor Paulson.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify, I have, I do have a picture so you can see.
Yeah, of the pine trees?
There's two, I can pass this around.
Right.
There's these two, one, two, and just down here, three, and those were planted to buffer so our plow trucks don't hit the fence.
Right.
However, if you look at where the mature ones are that are in the power line, these trees are going to grow right into the power line, and these, the ones with the stakes right here, I don't know if you can see that far.
Right.
Those are the newly planted cottonwood hybrids.
Correct.
So, it would be those two, and then one, two, three, three little pines, and if those could be inside, so they're not going to interfere, and this is down the road years, but, um, they will be doing, if you can see, those giant pine trees are right in the power line.
Yeah, but by moving those small trees in, that would significantly reduce that.
Yes, and that, so that's the motion for, it would be one, two, three little pines, and then whatever the little, however many are the little ones that are, the other ones are planted.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for that, allowing me to clarify.
No, thank you, thank you for that clarification, I'm on your frequency there, and so was Brian Silber. Moved and supported, further discussion, Counselor Bachsneider?
I just wanted to say thank you, Counselor Paulson, for bringing that up, I have talked to residents as well, um, had sent some emails asking this same question, so I'm glad this came up today. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, uh, so, is there a motion on the floor in support? Okay, thank you, is there any further discussion? Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor, I will not be supporting this, we had three professionals, one from Parks and Rec, one from the utility department, and the professional landscaper placed those trees. There is no reason for them to draw, draw, grow into the power lines because it can be maintained every year. Um, I, I will say this very plainly, this is micro-management of what our staff did and this decision that was made that we entrust them to, to make, and I will not be supporting moving three trees. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Counselor Johnson, it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Uh, roll call, please, Pam.
Johnson?
No.
Paulson?
Aye.
Yandich?
Aye.
Bachsneider?
Aye.
Friedle?
Aye.
Huffy?
Aye. Motion passes five-one, thank you.
Item number 11 is a request to appoint two team leaders in public works. So moved.
A move to approve this by Counselor, uh, Paulson, is there support?
Or?
A support by Counselor Friedle, is there any further discussion? I thank those public works, uh, workers for stepping up to the plate to assume these roles. Uh, further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 12 is a request for resolution, to review the resolution for increase in license fees.
I will move the resolution to the council meeting.
Uh, Counselor Johnson moves to approve, uh, the resolution for the increase in license fees as presented, move it to the council meeting for additional information discussion and vote, is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Bachsneider. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor, I do feel that a few of these are a little higher than I would like them to see, the massage license at, from going from $50 to $100. There are some massage therapists that work from their home, and I do feel that that might be a little bit of a, not a huge barrier, but I feel like that one, I would like to see maybe split between them. And then, the transient merchant license, I have been told in the past by specific food truck vendors that are, um, I know that they can obtain a one-day, and they know that too, but, um, that our transient merchant fee is prohibitive for them to come to Virginia. Um, so, I would like to see the $200 fee stay the same. Um, that's just what people have commented to me, so, and it may be part of our inspection process, too, that might have been tied, I don't, I don't know if everybody gets an inspection or not.
Mayor?
Uh, yes, Pam?
So, on the transient merchant, I think, because if they go to Menards or any of those places, that is where the fee is getting charged to them in addition to our annual fee of the $200. So, they're, they're charged a daily rate if they go there.
By the private business.
Specific, yeah, gas station or Menards, yep. So, because of that, it's kind of prohibit, I don't know if we could leave it at the 200, but I, I would be willing to leave that at 200 if everybody else would be, and then, on the, uh, the one-day, I would leave that at 50. Um, maybe the massage license go to 75, and then, on the film permit, that seems a little high, $100 a day and an admin fee of 50. I don't know if that's a normal rate.
Some of the other ones were charging that, but, um, we could, we can do whatever.
I feel like that's a little much. I mean, the last time we've had a couple film crews in, this was maybe three years ago, they were here for a solid, I want to say, four weeks when they were filming downtown. Um, so, I don't know if that could be, be revisited, but I think $100 is a little too much, the one-day transient I would leave at 50, the transient merchant regular I'd leave at 200, and the massage license I would go to 75. So, um, that would be what I would support, but I know there's a motion on the floor, and so, I would like just to see those changed, so I would, probably wouldn't support it going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. It has been moved and supported, I'm only going to say that, looking at other cities and what they do, I'm comfortable, I think some of these are, uh, are low. It's a, it's an annual thing, it's for a whole year, not just one day, for exception of the film permit, so I'm comfortable with the fees moved forward, I think some of them should be higher. So, moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please, Pam.
Paulson?
No.
Yandich?
Aye.
Bachsneider?
Aye.
Friedle?
Aye.
Huffy?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries five to one. Okay, next item, please.
Thank you, and the next item is the City Ordinance Regarding Amendment to Chapter Three, Sections 304, 340, and subsection 343.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Paulson.
Mayor, I would move to table this discussion until we get, um, more of the grant program assistance information.
Support.
Moved by Counselor, uh, Paulson, supported by Counselor Bachsneider to, uh, table this, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Motion, uh, uh, roll call, please, Pam.
Paulson?
Aye.
Yandich? Bachsneider?
Aye.
Friedle?
Aye.
Huffy?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Motion passes four-two, thank you.
The final item on the agenda today is discuss the contract for annual control services with Misabie Humane Society, and this portion of the meeting may be closed as per Minnesota statute 13D-03, 13D-05 subdivision three.
Okay, thank you, we'll look for a motion moving to close session.
All move.
By Counselor Bachsneider, supported by?
Support.
Uh, Counselor, uh, Yandich, further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, let's take a quick break, and then, I know people have to be out of